Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, March 4th, 2021. The time is 3:06 PM. To join this meeting, we've put the instructions on our website for people to be able to phone in or use their computer. I'd like to call to order, please say your name after I call your name. Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Himes.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Okay, and Councilmember Rodenberg. Okay, well hopefully he'll be joining us shortly. This is Mayor Keen from staff. We have city administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
I don't see, but community development director Katrina Knudsen. Oh, I'm looking at a roll call for the eighth. Okay. Um, public works director Jeff Langham.
Here.
Let's see. Now I'm looking at different roll calls. So anyone else that I have not called on?
You have Josh Decker, mayor.
Sorry. Assistant Clerk Josh Decker.
I am here.
Great. Okay. Please join us silently in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our first item tonight, or first item this afternoon is Employee Appreciation Day Proclamation. As most of us are aware, tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day. We had a meeting today with staff, I think. I'm not sure, how many people do you think we had, Bob?
We had, my screen showed fifty attendees at one point. We had the vast majority of those folks would be necessarily working because we obviously we got some folks that can't join us because they don't have the access to it, like public works folks as well as the police. But that was, it was a good showing and it was, it was very good to see, so.
Yeah, it was great to talk to them and just touch base. We were excited to have a big barbecue when we can with cornhole toss and all sorts of things, but we're not there yet, but we're looking forward to it. So we did let them know that every day is Employee Appreciation Day. It just happens to be celebrated tomorrow, but we are, we are honored to have them work alongside us every day. So we read this proclamation that we had heard from council that they wanted to be, have their name on as well, so we did that. So we read proclamation of the mayor of the city of Gig Harbor. Whereas the city of Gig Harbor employees perform their jobs daily with professionalism to provide, to provide efficient and effective delivery of services to the people of our community. And whereas city employees positively impact daily life through public safety, transportation, environmental quality, and many other areas. And whereas residents and visitors benefit daily from the often behind the scenes effort, unwavering dedication, commitment, and contributions of the city employees. And whereas city employees have shown compassion and resolve in responding to the COVID-19 epidemic while maintaining essential government operations. And whereas cities employ, employees continue to work onsite using health and safety precautions while others have adopted to telework during this time. And whereas whether working onsite or remotely, city employees remain focused on serving the public and performing jobs that make significant contribution to the well-being and quality of life for Gig Harbor citizens and others who live in and visit our city. And whereas the public services amble, ably provide, provided by the city employees make Gig Harbor one of the best places to live in the nation, earning at high ranks for livability. And now therefore, I, Mayor Keen, and city council members do proclaim Friday, March 5th, 2021, as Employee Appreciation Day. So they were very appreciative of this and we will, we will not read this Monday night because this was the second public meeting we've read it at, but we will acknowledge it under the mayor's comments for the mayor as well as from council members. Our next item is Ansich Dock Rules. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at the memo that was provided for this item. And if, as you recall, this month I put forth an ordinance proposing new rules for the existing docks located at Ansich Waterfront Park. The rules were based off of existing rules we have elsewhere at other overwater structures here at the city and based on input from permitting agencies and the city's risk management group, RMSA. At that meeting, city council requested that I go back and get some input from commercial fishing operators based on some comments the commercial fishing operators had on the ordinance. So today, well, last Friday, when the draft was represented to city council for this study session today, we have a new version of the ordinance. In that ordinance, I did receive input from a group of commercial fishing operators from here in Gig Harbor. I've taken more input from local and state permitting agencies. And I spoke based on a reference I received from one of the commercial fishing operators. I spoke with Ray Giometti from the manager of Fisherman's Terminal in Seattle, provide some input on how they manage their facility, which is in some ways very similar to what we have here in Gig Harbor, only on a much smaller scale. So as you've seen from the memo, the, and also probably seen from the email from a few of the Gig Harbor Commercial Fishing Club representatives, there were general support of what was proposed in the draft that ordinance you have before you. There was a couple of items that they had comments on and I wanted to address those now, but before I do that, I wanted to just pause and just see if I, if there are any comments from council at this point before I go ahead and address the comments that the representative of the Commercial Fishing Club had. Okay, don't see any hands. So I'm sure I have their notes correctly and bring up their, their letter to me here or to the city. There was a request, it says in many places for the word dock or pier to be specific such as Ansich Pier, Ansich Netshed, Jerkovic Pier, and is there a Jerkovic float? To be clear, the, the ordinance, and that was in the very first part of the ordinance, was trying to focus on just those three structures, the Netshed, the Ansich Pier, and the Jerkovic Pier. And that was in the, in a whereas clause, but also in the very first section of the ordinance, 8.27.010. And identifies those specifically. I'm not opposed to having those specific facilities called out. But in, when, when writing code language, having those, in my opinion, at least, in having three different names called out for each time you want to talk to these specific group of, of facilities, it's cumbersome, it's clunky, it's not typical of code language to go ahead and list all three facilities continuously like that for each time you have a section of ordinance, you generally just have a general term for them. And, and I know that the fishing operators, and I've had these discussions before, but there's a generic term for, that is used for overwater structures that's called a dock. And the dock includes piers, but piers are a fixed overwater structure and there's floats, which are overwater structures that go up and down with the tide. And so the intent was to write this code in a generic way because the Netshed is also overwater structure and it's not technically a pier and we're tech, we're trying to call out the Netshed separately. So it's, so the dock phrase or term is trying to encompass everything all at once. So we could call it something else, I'm not opposed to it. And the, the, as we said, the commercial fishermen are looking to have it called out just as by their specific names. So I see some hands up, Councilmember Himes.
Yes. I went through it and before I saw a guy hopping and Greg Lovovich's comments, I had the same issue. And the more I looked at it, I said, you know, if I were a customer, I would have trouble with this, the way it's currently written, to figure out what the heck was going on. And then I said, well, if I'm a customer, I'm probably going to be a paddler and I could care less about fishermen. If I was a fisherman, I could care less about paddlers on their dock, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what I concluded was, it seems to me, and this is just my opinion, that it would be better. These, and the things that go with them, for example.
You broke up when you said it would be better, so, and then we didn't hear that. So can you just say that one part again?
Yeah, I, I thought it would be better if, if, if the specific facilities were listed independently as major titles in this thing. And then the requirements that went with that particular facility, be it the fisherman's floating dock, the Ansich Pier and Netshed, the Jerkovic Pier, we're going to have the same issue there, and the paddler's dock. It seems to me, from a user standpoint, it would be much simpler to say, okay, I go to that thing that deals with what I'm interested in and here's the requirements that go with it. You know, it's sort of like reading the, the, I have the same issue, by the way, with vehicle owners guides, where we drag them over the valley and through the dell on a hundred pages that they could care less about to find the one thing that they really do care about. That's, that drives me up a wall, so I'm very sympathetic to the issue.
Okay, well, let, let me address that before I call on Councilmember Abersole. If, if the interest is to separate, so each section of this code that is identified and the, and, and I can bring up the code on the screen if, if people would like to look at it, so let me know if you want to actually see it. But each section, Councilmember Franch, a few people are nodding their heads, okay, let me bring that up, so I'm going to share my screen here, just a second here. Okay, hopefully all of you can see this now. So here's the, here's the ordinance that we're talking about. And each section of code is, it, within this ordinance, is talking about the docks. And so it's talking about each of those three facilities. And then you have, at the very bottom, you have penalties. So if the interest is to have three, each of the facilities identified separately, I'm going to pause on this, back up and create new code for each of the three facilities. So I'll create 8.27 will be for the pier, 8.26 will be for the Netshed, 8.25 will be for the Jerkovic Pier. And to be clear, the Jerkovic Pier and it is, is just the pier that sits there today. All of these, all of these facilities only refer to what sits there today. I'm, I would never suggest that we create code for a facility that doesn't exist because it, it might not come to fruition the way that we intended it, then we've got to go back and fix the code and then what are we enforcing? So anything that has to do with a float system for community paddler stock isn't talked about. Anything that has to do with the float system for future home port facilities is, is not part of this. And the Jerkovic's float system isn't part of this because we don't own it, we don't manage it, we can't put rules on it. So if that's the direction that council is wanting to go, I'd like to get a feel if that's the majority of the direction because what, if we want each facility outlined separately to say that the Ansich Pier has to have these rules, the Ansich Netshed has to have these rules, and the, and the Jerkovic Pier has to have these rules, then I'm going to create three different chapters within Title VIII for that. And it will have the exact same language, it will be cut and paste, cut and paste, cut and paste. But if that's more clear.
Particularly with what you just mentioned, the rollout of this thing, the only thing that we could talk about definitively right now is the Ansich Pier and the Netshed. And then would come the next thing, which would be probably the Jerkovic Pier and the paddler's dock. And then after that would come the fisherman's dock, okay? And I'm sure thrown in there is going to be something about the park and storage facility and all that stuff. But if need be, from a simplicity standpoint, a, a new ordinance for each one wouldn't bother me in the least and it would seem like we could, we could copy text quite easily if it's applicable from one to the next if that were appropriate, okay? Those elements were appropriate. I'm, I'm just looking at it from a customer viewpoint.
Sure, and I appreciate that point of view. So, so I see there's more hands, but I just want to keep on this one for a second. Councilmember Himes, the Jerkovic Pier exists. That, that, that isn't a future project, that sits there today. And so the Jerkovic Pier is the brand new wooden pier and aluminum catwalk that exists, that is the pier. And so the rules are set forth not only for the Ansich Pier, but the Jerkovic Pier. Because we don't want some of these activities occurring on the Jerkovic Pier, just the way, the same way we don't want some of these activities occurring on the, on the Ansich Pier. And the rules for the Ansich Park already exist under the parks code, so I'm not looking to create a future code for the Ansich Waterfront Park either. That's separate. So the, so what I'll, what I'll do, unless I hear otherwise from council tonight, I'm going to take this section of code and I'm going to split it into three different chapters and each of its chapters will, I'd be connected to each of the facilities.
Let's wait until we know that there's enough support in that.
Yeah.
Because you are in charge of this as far as it's your department and, and, you know, I, I'm under the incline to let you do what you're doing, which you know best, I feel. Now, that doesn't mean council might want something different or have a different approach, but I want to make sure you don't change something that makes it more difficult when, if it's not necessary. So we'll get, we'll, we'll listen to the rest, but then let's get a show of hands before we change.
Sure. Councilmember Abersole.
You're muted. My question is on, let me find the document now. It's under the Ansich Pier access and use requirements on page two of four, item number six. The operator of a watercraft shall not moor a vessel for more than four hours to appear in any 24-hour period. My concern is, is, you know, I don't really know how much time it takes to load a big boat up with things, but I'm assuming four hours puts everyone under a crunch and forces people to rush. Maybe, you know, Councilmember Franch can speak to this or not, but, and then has, you have to move boats in and out and everything like that. And especially if there's multiple boats there working, it could get a traffic jam kind of situation and I'm, I'm just concerned that four hours is not enough time and puts everyone at a disadvantage and I'd maybe like to see that moved to six hours if council agrees.
Well, I, I, for a moment, there's a, there's a tide thing, you know. You would only get two boats allowed per day at the most because in, in eight hours the tide's going to be too low. And so it allows another boat to be able to come in during the same day. Isn't that correct, Jeff?
Yes, that is, that is correct, that the, the limit on there was to facilitate having that most amount of boat, or at least more than one boat access it during a tidal cycle. But I want to be very clear, what you're referring to, Councilmember Abersole, is the use authorizations, which were, which are supplied for, as a sample only, but that's not what council's adopting. And so we're, that would be a separate topic.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. So I can, I can understand what Councilmember Himes is talking about with some possible confusion, but back on the page one of five on the ordinance number 14XX.
Yes.
So there, under section one, we're referring to public docks. And then the word docks is under public uses, docks isn't used again there?
Yes.
So, you know, I, I, at least from, in, in the old days, the dock was the dock, but now apparently you want to call, there, there used to be what, the, there was a dock and the Netshed was on the dock. So why is the word dock still used there when we're starting to use the word pier now?
Let's think back to Jersich Dock. Jersich Dock consisted, consisted of both the pier, which is fixed above the water, and the float that goes up and down on the water. So the word dock here was intended to be generic for an overwater structure. I, I've, I've heard this multiple times since, since, well, for many years now that there's confusion. And so maybe, and this is something where I, I just need to be, need, need to supplement or revise these terms and ask the fishermen and the council what they would like to hear because I'm, docks are considered piers and floats like Jersich Dock, but then when I apply it here at Ansich Docks, Ansich Public Docks, there's confusion. So can you help me understand what the difference is?
Well, I, the, the difference is now we're using a new nomenclature of the word. It used to be, at least from the fisherman's point of view, that the dock is, the dock and the Netshed were one thing. I mean, the dock is where the Netshed was now. So I, this really leads me to believe, to, excuse me, to support Councilmember Himes' notion that we need to, since we've got, we're, in order to avoid confusion, I think Councilmember Himes' suggestions are the way to go, that we clearly define each item separately and then there's no confusion by anybody.
Okay, I think that's a great suggestion. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, and first of all, thank you for bringing in the commercial fishermen in to have a conversation. And, and then I also support Councilmember Himes and Councilmember Franch on separate, making these separate.
Okay, great. Councilmember Markley.
Did it unmute me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I, I'm also supportive of that, just, just to avoid any confusion because there's going to be so much activity happening down there. I think that that's a good suggestion. I know that it might be some extra staff time, but Jeff, if you're, if you think that it's doable and it won't overwhelm you, I think it would be a really good idea to separate those out for future too, you know, just, just future uses of, of those, you know, of parks that have multiple things going on in the same area, that it just might be a good practice to start being really specific, just so there's just not any questions about it. So I'm supportive of that.
Okay, okay, great. I, it's a majority here, consensus seems to be heading that direction. It's, it's not hard to separate these out at all, it's, it's real easy to do. I will do that and coordinate that with Chief Bucy to make sure that he is aware of this because he and I have been working together in the background on this and go from there related to the separation, so not a problem. Okay. I'm going to go on to the next item that the fishermen noted, well, actually the next two items. Well, I'll just start with the second, second item is we asked that future commercial fishing vessel mortgage be referenced. Again, my statement earlier, I understand why there's interest in, maybe even in, in the whereas of putting that, a statement in there, but when something gets placed in code, something for the future that might or will likely occur, I, I'm never supportive of putting it something like that into code. I would be very supportive of putting something like that into the whereas clauses. And then once commercial fishing mortgage is established or coming close to being established and under construction or something like that, that we, then that's the time we can create code specifically for that mortgage and that overwater structure, then we could add that. So that's my opinion on that item, but I'd be curious to hear if council has a different Councilmember Himes?
Yeah, I got, I, I got, I lost contact for about five minutes there, but just to regress for a second on the docks versus piers issue, I think it would really help if you call a pier a pier and you call a dock a floating dock. That'll give the idea that floating docks go up, docks go up and down and piers stay put, rather than just docks and piers. Call the, the, the docks floating docks and the piers, piers, I think people will figure it out better.
Well, I, what, what I would recommend, and this is just going back to terminology that's used for the permitting agencies, it's just not, I just, I don't think I'm going to use the word docks. I think I'm going to use the word floats and piers because those are very specific and I see some head nods going on.
Yeah, so, yeah. That'll work too.
Okay. And Councilmember Wook, just want to acknowledge, I did see your thumbs up there. Councilmember Franch?
Yeah, I, I, I think that you're right about not putting anything into the ordinance that doesn't already exist or the regulations, so what you were referring to earlier about mortgage, so.
Okay, okay. And then number three then on their comment is related to work limit for gear and, and within the net, within the use authorizations. Again, that's not directly, that's not being adopted as part of this ordinance and it's a separate discussion for later. And so I, I, I hear what they're saying, I understand. Definitely interested in having that conversation, but for the ordinance itself to adopt code, I would say that we defer that conversation. Okay, Councilmember Franch, your hand is up, I'm not sure if you had another question.
Yeah, I, I do.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm a little bit confused there, you're, this, this ordinance, we're not, this ordinance is not adopting these pier use operation and net shed use, use authorizations?
No, it is not. Those use authorizations are focused more on day-to-day operation of the actual facility. The code itself is providing something for the police to be able to enforce. Let's, let me give you an example. So let's say, and, and I've seen this actually already, let's say someone drives their vehicle down to launch a kayak. They've, I've seen vehicles and had to go down there and ask people to remove their vehicles from the park and from trying to drive onto the pier to park their vehicle. Right now, there have been ballards in place, there's been a couple of times where the ballads have been removed. And so I've had to ask people to please move your vehicle, you're not allowed here. Well, it doesn't say that anywhere and the police don't have any enforcement mechanism. And so if somebody says, no, I'm not going to move my vehicle, well, then legally, I'm kind of in a tough spot. Same thing can be said for, we don't want a tourist boat, let's just say, I don't mean to pick on tour boats, but let's say a tour boat comes into town and they want to unload and load passengers from Ansich Pier. We don't have anything that says you can't do that. Let's say a, a large, let's say a large vessel comes, a private vessel comes that wants to unload their 20-foot dinghy that's on the back of their boat and take their davit and load it onto a trailer that they want to park on the Ansich Pier. Right now, there's nothing that says they can't do that. This code establishes that the only people that can use this dock or this Ansich Pier or the Ansich Netshed are, are the commercial fishermen that have unapproved use authorization. And so the, and use authorizations can change. If, if regulations change, if insurance. And so the and use authorizations can change if if regulations change, if insurance. Issues change, that needs to be flexible and on done on a day to day operational approach instead of by code. It wouldn't be appropriate to put into code that you're going to establish what your insurance rates or insurance limits are and and other items. So so we've separated the two.
Okay, so where where in the ordinance itself does it talk about? Because the way I I really must have been asleep at switch because in reading the or talks about driving on the pier and what have you. Those seem to be under these use off the rules seem to be spelled out more in the use use authorization section. Rather than the ordinance itself.
Well, let me let me go to definitions. I'm going to change my page. And if people want to stop looking at the ordinance on the screen, tell me, but I've got I've kept up. So one of the key definitions in here is commercial fishing operator. It says that a commercial fishing operator, which is referenced in many other sections of the of this section of code. Says that a commercial fishing operator is a user of a commercial fishing vessel who has received authorization from the city. To to use the and has a properly executed use authorization form. So that says the only people who can do all these things that are on listed in here are commercial fishing operators. If you're not a commercial fishing operator, you can't. You can't put motorized vessels on there. You can't come up and tie off to the you can't have commercial activity. So it's really just giving the police the ability to enforce what the council is looking to have this facility restricted. I mean, it does say general public use, general public may use it, but as long as they don't interfere with commercial fishing operators. Let's say a family wants to have a wedding out on. Out on the pier and of course fish. It's the middle of the day and the first fishing operator says, hey, I need to come in and unload or I'm I'm mending nets and I need this facility. Well, generally in our parks, if you're there first, then you get to use the facility. You don't, somebody just doesn't get to come and take it over. But what this code says is that no, that's not true in this case. General public can use it unless it interferes with a commercial fishing operator. Commercial fishing operator has to have an authorized use authorization from the city. So it allows enforcement.
When when do you plan on coming back to put the rules in place, which the rules, I guess, are are going to be governed through the use authorization?
Well, I wasn't planning on coming to the council to have the use authorizations. The council has never approved use authorizations. It's always been an administrative function.
Well. You know, that that kind of well, and I guess that will lead you into your next question that I know the fishermen brought up. As far as how many days they can be there with, you know. Uninterrupted with. Putting together a net. But I I guess let me back up one second now that you brought up weddings and that's something I hadn't thought of. So. If you want to have a wedding in the park right now, you need to get a special use or a. A.
Especially if you if it's over a certain number of people, but let's say you and your future spouse and the officiant and your witnesses are the only ones. If it doesn't fall within the threshold and you just want to go out there and have that, then you don't need a special event permit.
Do you will? Do you need a special event permit to use a pier?
It would special events permit does would include this this facility because it's part of Ansich Waterfront Park.
Okay.
And maybe maybe my wedding example isn't a good one. Let's say you and your family want to go out there and have a picnic. You spread out your picnic blanket across the wooden part of the pier. And you're just started in your picnic and the commercial fishing operator says, hey, we've got to, we're gonna have to ask you to move. And they say, no, you don't have the right to. Well, this code gives the commercial fishing operator, again, based on that definition, the right to ask them to move.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll wait to hear when we start talking about. I know one of the other provisions that's in the youth authorization. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Markley?
I'd like to acknowledge that Councilmember Rodenberg has joined us. So thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize. I had a family emergency. I'm here now.
Thank you. So. I see what you're saying, Jeff. This could get really confusing and frustrating down there for not only just members of the public that are wanting to go and use. Those facilities, but. Well, there. The commercial fishermen are going to pay a certain fee to have a permit, right, to be able to do these activities. It's like a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that.
It's a it's a key deposit essentially.
Oh, key deposit. Okay, so they don't pay for the agreement. They just pay a key deposit to to do. Okay.
Yeah, and it's not an annual fee or anything. It's just a one time fee.
Just a one time fee. That's right. I remember you telling me that earlier. So would there be anything posted for the public? Right there at the park to let them know, hey, if you're, I mean, I don't know how I don't even know what verbiage we would use, but just. Just to clarify to them that that's that the commercial fishermen have precedence over private parties, private weddings. You know, because I can see like fights breaking out almost. And I don't want to. I don't want that to happen. So I'm just wondering like, how can I would those be really clearly posted? So people would know that a fisherman has the right to tell them, you have to leave because I need this this pier. Is that?
It would be, but without this code, we couldn't post it because we couldn't refer back to anything. Once the code's adopted, then we can post signs and say per Gik Harbor Municipal Code eight point two seven point zero seven zero. Public may use it unless an authorized user, commercial fishing operator, needs it essentially. I mean, that's I'm just just rough made up language here on the fly. But without the code, we can't say that. We can't post anything that says you can't or that the commercial fishing operators have precedence.
Are there any other parks in our city where we're going to run into this issue or is this really the only one because of those specific authorized use permits?
You know, we have it at Maritime Pier right now. Maritime Pier has use authorizations.
Is this something that if we adopt, would that be would that cross over and be effective for Maritime Pier as well? Or we have to do this all over again for Maritime Pier?
It already exists.
Oh, it already exists.
This section of code, my my first draft of this section of code that I presented on April or February eight. Was almost identical to the language that already exists for Maritime Pier.
Okay, so we're just doing the same thing for Ansich then?
Yes, but but I've heard, but but the use of Ansich, especially the net shed is different. And so that's where the 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 commercial fisherman, the commercial fishing operators, and I think some of members of council. Have wanted to make sure that we're approaching this a little differently.
Okay, thank you very much.
I might add, we've had fishermen have been able to use this for over a year. We adopted the pier. We've adopted and they haven't come to us for for almost two years on the net shed. So we adopted the same rules for the pier as we had for maritime. So even though we've built it, it's it's not ideal in a way to use it because of the tide and because of the backing up and everything. But yeah, we're just we're not inventing the wheel. We're adopting what we've already had at the other dock.
Councilmember Heinz?
Yeah, on the on the the commercial fishermen's use of the pier versus the public's use of the pier. Your examples are good ones, by the way, in terms of potential issues. And I must confess, I'm struggling here a little bit called. The the battle cry has been for this facility all along is we'd like to get the public up close and see what fishermen really do. Okay, and that was one of the main reasons to 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 pursue this thing. And now we're kind of, oh, wow, you can be here except when there's fishermen here.
No, and and be very clear, this section of code that's on the page eight point twenty seven point zero seven zero says the general public may shall not interfere or inhibit. Doesn't say they can't be in the same area. It just says if 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 a commercial fishing operator is there and needs to swing some. Equipment off their vessel onto the pier or vice versa, if the commercial fishing operator is it needs to do that work or and or back a vehicle down onto the pier. Then the the general public can be there. They just can't interfere with the commercial fishing operators' interest to do that. So they could just move out of the way essentially.
Okay.
And not move off the pier.
Yeah, I'm with Councilmember Markley on this one call. There needs to be some way to to spell that out so that people don't get offended.
And there will be if council adopts code. If council doesn't adopt these rules, we can't put anything down there because we don't have any rules to enforce.
Okay.
I might add, our our grant to fix the whole net shed was was stipulated that the public would be able to watch. It was very strong that the public would be able to be educated and watch the fishermen, and that's the only way we got the grant. So we didn't get it without the public involvement, the public use.
Yeah.
And when it comes to things like this, the words interfere inhibit, I mean, really, that's a that's a police if there if it gets to the point where. I heard the the term fights break out and I know that really wouldn't happen, I don't think, but what would it comes down to it, though, if you have two parties that are disagreeing and someone does call the police or. And and they come down there and they say, well, someone has to decide if if someone's being interfering or inhibiting. So and and maybe there's a better term, but those are just the the terms that came up. Councilmember Markley?
Yes, thank you. I want to make it clear that I wasn't trying to insinuate that the public was not welcome down at this facility. And that there would be fight. I use the term fights breaking out loosely. I wasn't saying like actual fistfights are going to happen. But I wanted to just clarify that statement so people aren't thinking I'm thinking it's going to be some big thing. I just mostly I just wanted to stress that we just need to make it really clear on signage what the what the rules are, just so that that's just there. But um, so I I think if we're going to have, you know, peaceful operations down there, then we do need to adopt this at some, you know, and get this in the code. But yes, I I really do want the public to be able to come and watch the the fishermen. I think we all do it. That's part of the whole thing is to have them learn and be able to even talk with some of the fishermen and, you know, watch them do what they do because it's really cool. So just wanted to make that that clear.
Councilmember Franch?
Thank you. Um, you know. I I'm not the biggest fan of signs. I believe in sign pollution, but. When it comes to drafting language, as far as this discussion that we're having about potential conflicts. Would that section eight point two seven point oh seven oh, do you think that if that was just printed and put somewhere that that would be sufficient?
Yes, I think so. I think so. Okay, that's probably the key section of code that that would be of dispute down in that facility.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Abersole?
Yeah, is there any record or indication of public problems with commercial fishermen down at Maritime Pier?
I I don't know. I haven't heard of any. I don't know. I'm sure the commercial fishermen could tell us that they have. I wouldn't be surprised. But that said, this facility here will likely have more hours of commercial fishing operators using it than Maritime Pier. Like commercial fishermen have said that they there might be days in a row that they're down there, weeks in a row that they're down there. And all the time in the spring getting ready before they depart and in between seasons and to to get ready for the next season. So. I would imagine that there's going to be a lot more opportunity for the general public to be in the midst of what the commercial fishing operators are doing. Not to mention the this one, this park has a very large upland presence to it more than just a parking lot. So and human powered craft and everything else. So this park, in my opinion, is going to be. Much busier with people walking around than Maritime Pier, but that's just my opinion. Councilmember Heinz?
Yeah, I guess to to further amplify that, I even went down and measured it. The the passage to get from the land to the back of the pier where most boats are going to be loaded and unloaded with items. Is very narrow called it's about ten feet from the railing over to the net shed. In some areas, it's nine feet. You're getting really tight there. So I I think this is a big thing called. I know if I were a commercial fisherman, I wouldn't want anybody in that area when I'm trying to back a vehicle up down that corridor.
Sure. Councilmember Denson?
I just wanted to add to to Councilmember Heinz's point. When this came before the Parks Commission years and years and years ago. Really, the vision was the public being up on that viewing platform and looking down on the commercial fishing operations. That's what we always talked about. I think it's great for the public is is welcome down there and certainly they'll be down there on the plaza anyway. Because they're going to be launching their standard paddle boards or kayaks or or picnicking or whatever. And they can be on, you know, around the net shed area if it's safe. But I think the Parks Commission vision was always that that was going to be a lot of industrial activity with the nets and cranes and fishing. Unloading and unloading that the public would would kind of observe from either back or up on top. So just giving you that perspective from from history.
Okay, thank you. So unless there's anything else specifically related to the fishermen's comment, that I was going to move on to something that was added in her or drastically. Not drastically, that was changed and is different than any other overwater facility that the city has. And I just wanted to make this is this has to do with section and I can make a bigger. Can everyone see? Okay, the the text that's on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking at the very bottom of this page is on the screen eight point two seven point zero nine zero commercial activity. As a reference, no other overwater structure here at the city allows commercial activity. But the commercial fishermen have said that they are looking to have commercial activity, at least as an option. And so I revised this section and this 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 it's revised, as you see it today. That allows commercial activity to be performed by the users of the dock as long as they're a commercial fishing operator. So and that that what exactly that is? Well, that's that's called out in the use authorizations themselves. But this now allows commercial activity to take place on the city's facilities, which I I'm assuming that there has been some intent for that to happen. So. Not opposed to that, supportive of that. I just want to make sure council's aware that that's different than any other facility that we operate. You know, Councilmember Franch?
And I'm sure that you've run that eight point two seven oh nine oh by RMSA.
I have not. This is I I wanted to have, based on my last conversation with council, I wanted to hear council's input before I ran it by RMSA again. And 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 so that was one of my caveats that I wanted to close with, but I'll I'll say it now. So once we get through with this discussion, I'm going to make these revisions that we've been talking about. And then I'm going to run it by RMSA and then come back to council at a future council meeting, hopefully very soon. Because the time is of the essence for the commercial fishing operators to use this facility this spring. Councilmember Wook?
What is the definition of commercial operator? Is it anybody? Do they have to be connected with Gig Harbor? Can anybody drive up and say I'm a commercial, I want to offload something?
It's well, let's let's read the definition right above on the top of the page. Commercial fishing operator is the user of a commercial fishing vessel. Who has received authorization from the city to use one or more of the docks. As authorized and appropriately executed Ansich Pier and to that should use authorization. And then but the key here is a commercial fish. It's a user of a commercial fishing vessel. So then you go back up to the definition of commercial fishing vessel, type of watercraft used and it's licensed for commercial fishing. By a state government or federally recognized Indian tribe. So I and and there was a there was a modification. The commercial fishermen asked there. I took out State of Washington's, but any state government can authorize it. So so gooey duck operators, as long as they have a license or they're a tribal gooey duck operator, they could operate down here. We're trying to be. Broad in terms of what a commercial fishing operator is and not say City of Gig Harbor or a resident of Gig Harbor who has a commercial fishing license. So it is. It is broad, but you have to have a commercial fishing license and a commercial fishing vessel.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Denson?
And just a quick, hopefully not stupid question in regards to the commercial activity. Don't we have commercial activity happening, like it's not on the dock, but it's Scancy Park with the farmer's market? And couldn't this be simple or similar if they wanted to do like a fish market seasonally or something or something like that?
Yes, but I believe the downtown Waterford Alliance gets a permit for the for the. Use of Scancy Park. And so I'm I'm blanking. This is a blanket statement that's going to be in code and not through a permit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Markley?
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask something similar to Councilmember Denson. I I know there had been some talk about possibly having a fish market down there or something like that. But I was going to ask, what types of activities are defined by commercial activity? I mean, what what could that entail?
Well, it's pretty loose right now. It's it's what is in the and you see it in the sample use authorization. I think it says that it just has to be, the activity has to be able to be licensed. So. It's it's pretty loose, but a commercial fishing operator, if they want to sell quilts, well, maybe that's okay. So it's, it's pretty loose, but a commercial fishing operator, if they want to sell quilts, well, maybe that's okay. So anyway, but, but council and, and administration have the right to, to, to narrow it down. You, you could, council could ask that it be narrowed down here. Maybe you say, um, commercial activity directly related to commercial fishing operations or something. I mean, that, that could be something that you want to narrow it down.
I would think we might want to do that. You know, if, if, if this is all about commercial fishermen and they have to be licensed commercial vessels and licensed fishing vessels, it would make sense that the activity being done down there would be directly related to the commercial fishing industry, because there are other areas in town where we're doing things where other part, other particip, like the farmer's market, where other participants can come and sell their goods and things like that. So I just think it would be, it would make sense to avoid, yet again, just to avoid confusion and be able to kind of narrow it down to being specific to commercial act, um, fisherman activity. I would love to know what the, my fellow council people think, but that just seems to make the most sense to me.
One question to Jeff already, we're, we're working off the grant. The grant basically already stipulates it's commercial, the whole pier is for the public or commercial fishing. So doesn't, I mean, all we have to do is show that fit before we just write more rules. If we show that person that wants to sell T-shirts that, um, have nothing to do with fishing, can't we just show them that this is not in the, the state grant that we got?
That would be harder to connect directly to code and to be enforced. Again, this code is intention intended to have an easy mechanism to enforce.
Okay. Thanks for clarification.
You, but, uh, councilmember Markley, did you have another question? Okay. Uh, councilmember Abersol.
Yes, uh, I agree with councilmember Markley. I think we need to, uh, further define that commercial use on the language, because I could see, you know, someone could be licensed to sell fireworks. And they want to, you know, support their, the fishermen's club by selling fireworks off the back of the boat. Now that would not be appropriate.
Okay, that's, that's great. Uh, councilmember French.
Uh, I concur with, uh, councilmember Abersold and Markley on tightening those, tightening those rules out to, uh, say that, you know, it's, it's, there needs to be a nexus between the commercial fishing activity and what is actually happening on the ground.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Heinz.
Uh, I'm supportive too of exactly that, so I've been tightening it up.
Okay. Um, councilmember.
And I'm supportive as well of tightening up those rules.
Okay, that's a vast majority of council, so I will, uh, make that modification to point zero nine zero to, to more clearly define what exactly that activity is. Okay. Um, let's see, um, I'm going down my list unless anybody has any other items on this scroll here. Uh, well, my last item was that I, based on the input I've received this afternoon, I'm going to take it to RMSA, do the revision, take it to RMSA and come back to council. I, I, you, as you know, I can't get it back in time to meet the March eighth meeting, but I will definitely, uh, have it back for the March twenty second. Unless there's any other comments, questions, concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, um, before I get completely off this, and I know we have a lot on the agenda, I just wanted to follow up because the same group of people, the commercial fishing operators, council, I want to follow up from our January fourteenth study session, if that's all right, may I just take a minute on that? So a January fourteenth study session, we had, uh, discussion on the, um, commercial fishing home port study. And, uh, from that, there was an interest, and we should stop sharing my screen and share a different screen. There was an interest to have, uh, uh, the city take a look at the, um, two thousand fourteen, what was called referred to as the Helix Design, uh, from two thousand fourteen for the commercial float system out in front of Anshich Waterfront Park. So, um, I want to let council know that we went back, we found the design. And, uh, it was, it was also provided to us by the commercial fishing operators and I wanted to share it with you on the screen. We went back and we looked at the constraints of the, that are put before us by DNR, by permitting agencies, I'll just say. And, uh, and some of the best practices that the commercial fishing operators have provided us and, uh, put those constraints onto the Helix Design and we recalculated exactly how many linear feet of moorage you get from that. So I'm going to share that with you now and, uh, just wanted to show that before we get too far off away from this topic. And before we get back and have this discussion with the public in the near future. So hopefully all of you can see the screen now. So this is the Helix Design, what we keep referring to as the H design. This was created in two thousand fourteen. So this is before, um, PND engineers came on board and before we actually submitted permit applications. All of the lines and cut and the text in the blue was added by Josh Gilchrist here at the city. And this yellow line was also added by Josh. Uh, we put these on here so we could get a good idea of how it fits into the actual allowed use on this, on this site and over the aquatic area. A key point is again, this magic minus seven, uh, tidal depth. No vessel can be moored in or anchored within that minus seven, uh, depth because extreme low tide is a minus four. And the DNR and the state agencies want at least three feet of depth, uh, below the water surface. So vessels, if not sailboats necessarily, they're larger vessels, but they don't ground out when they're at that depth. So, um, we looked at this, uh, based on the Helix Design, which is key note here is that this gangway on the Helix Design is at the corner of the opposite corner of the pier. Right now, this core over here, if you can see my cursor, and we've actually notched it out to get it even further away is where the gangway is proposed for the future home port fishing float system. And so this has moved it over here. It's moved it over to much closer to this minus seven. We'll lose a slip here. A couple of other items to note, um, there's been, there was the, the fisherman mentioned ninety feet of distance between the end of the, the edge of the pier and the, uh, DNR aquatic lease. And so there's the surveyed boundary and here's the pier, that's seventy one feet. It was a little more than that here. I think this was a little bit more. So really these floats wouldn't meet that minimum requirement fishermen have, have offered us and that DNR recommends. Another one is, there's only twelve and a half feet from the outer part of the last finger float to the DNR aquatic lease. Uh, that's definitely not wide enough for a wide beam boat to be able to fit in there. The DNR requires that all vessels would stay within, this, this line, by the way, is the outer harbor line. All vessels that were moored have to stay within the outer harbor line. And so, um, we are based on the numbers that we've been looking at with commercial, we're talking twenty two feet. So we need to almost double that area here. Uh, long and short of it is, um, I know the fishing operators were talking about having three to four thousand linear feet of moorage here. We came down to, once you add all these constraints, permit constraints and everything else, we come, came up to just a little over a thousand linear feet of moorage. And that's not a whole lot more than what alternative E was. Alternative E was without rafting was about six hundred linear feet. With rafting, it was, it was twelve hundred linear feet. So, um, I just want to bring that back. That's what we found. When we get the, this, the next steps in the process for this, uh, for this facility to have, uh, or to review the, the commercial fishing home port study with the general public, we'll add this into the discussion so that we can be very clear that this had been considered a while ago. And, uh, and then we can get public input and comment on this option also. Councilmember.
So we know now what it is with the rafting, but the other option with the fingers on there, how many, how many feet with that option?
Uh, you, you mean with the one that was identified in alternative A in the study?
I believe so.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that was the other alternative.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember the linear feet. I just remember there were fewer number of boats compared to when, when raft, when use, when calculating rafting.
Right, right. There are fewer number of boats, but we don't know what the linear feet is.
No, I, I, I can, I can calculate that and, uh, well, well, before we get to the time where we have this public discussion.
Great, thank you.
But yeah, I just wanted to close the loop on, on the question that came up during the January fourth study session. Councilmember. Oh, I think you're.
Is there a way to, uh, possibly have a, a hybrid? I mean, take this general consensus, take off those two docks, move that one back twenty two feet and, and see what it would take to maximize. I don't think we'd have to go to a consultant, uh, to just find out if it's feasible to do something like that.
Uh, to, to, to put a sketch together, absolutely. We can, um, we can do that in-house and, uh, and we've.
Just to maximize the mortgage.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. The, the question then comes, if we are going to start changing the layout of the float system, then do we, do we need to go back to the consultant after we have, uh, option to maximize the moorage to redo the study and say what those impacts will be? That would be the question I would have if, if we're going to change the direction or add another alternative.
Or do we go back to the drawing board, you know, and be, and start over with all the, the consultant and all the different stakeholders, because this also changes the view corridor. It basically changes everything that the consultant, uh, determined. So when, and that was a, that was a year and a half study with the consultants and the stakeholders. My goal is to get this thing built and start permitting it, uh, as, and, uh, go off the work that we did the consultants. And if we want to vary from it, then we got to start over. I'd like to get this built. Also, if we do a linear dock, if we, if we feel that we need to expand down the road, we still have that ability with the fingers. So.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, along that same line, do we have any idea of view wise, how this compares? If you see, if you superimpose this on top of, for example, a linear dock we were looking at?
Yeah.
How much of the view have we eliminated?
Um, I did, I do have here, let me switch. If, I don't have it superimposed. We could do that, but I do have another, uh, tab open with that in case somebody asks that. So it's almost like you.
Right. Is there, there are more safety concerns too, because now the boats have to back out, whereas into the kayakers. And you've changed the, wasn't the pier built for the gangway to go off the west side and not the east side?
The pier, the pier was built to see, as shown here for the gangway and, and it's, there's a knockout, a notch out for the pier or for the gangway here. So this is what the linear moorage float system looks like and the open water compared to the Helix Design. And again, like councilmember Rodenberg said, there, there's, there's ways to do hybrids for sure. But, uh, by far, this linear float system provides, no matter what you do, will provide the most amount of open water if that's a priority for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
I, I just have a, we always talk about open water view and the view corridor. I, I disagree. I don't think, uh, a view corridor necessarily has to be open water. I think moored fishing vessels is a great view. And I think that that is, should be considered. It's not, open water is the only kind of view anybody would appreciate. I think a lot of people appreciate actually seeing the vessels out there.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Markley.
Yes, I was actually going to say the same thing. It, you know, if the whole purpose of building this is so that we have a working waterfront where the public can come and watch these fishermen do what they do. I don't see why the, the view wouldn't be a good view with, with vessels down there, you know, doing what they, doing what they do. So I don't, um, I feel like this linear design is just, I, I feel like it's cleaner and it would provide more. I mean, it looks like it's going to provide more space and more moorages. Is that, is that accurate?
It would not, not if you don't include rafting. You would have to include rafting for it to provide more. And there, there is reluctance to raft. There, there's, uh, there's a whole number of reasons why vessels wouldn't want to raft. But it is, um, but there's, but one of the big benefits of rafting is you get a lot more, uh, capacity.
And rafting, rafting is the definition of them being able to pull up next to each other and tie up to, is that, okay, that.
Side by side.
Side by side.
Side by side.
Okay, well, um, I'd like, I guess I want to hear from everybody else too.
Uh, councilmember French.
Yes, I think that the, uh, view corridor i- in light of the way the, the Gig Harbor has developed with marinas, we are losing more and more of open space. And to me, um, especially in light of, uh, I, I, one of the, the biggest benefits of all of the jerkoviches being gracious enough to want to share their float was to, um, enhance the view corridor. And at least from my perspective, I think that a, um, open water view corridor is becoming more and more hard to come by. So I think all we can do to preserve an open view corridor is important. And there, you know, i- i- as far as the whole, uh, discussion on, on finger piers versus, um, the linear float and the, the possibility of rafting, given that Jeff had talked about, and I'll, I'll be curious to see what his numbers are. Uh, the new DNR regulations, uh, that, that Helix Design is, is no longer doable. What, what the actual linear feet of a new proposal for, uh, finger pier uh, moorage, I'll be curious to see what that number is. But, um, rafting is, um, been used in forever since the days of, and, and I know one of these days we'll get around to the whole discussion on the historical, uh, character of the way boats were tied up in Gig Harbor. But, um, you can go back, rafting was the way that things were done. You can look at the old Conan's fuel dock where Arbelos Landing is now, Stanich Dock, um, the Castellan Dock, Tarboche's, the Anshich Dock. Rafting is, is, uh, been around since the days of, uh, docks being in Gig Harbor. So be an interesting discussion in the future.
Councilmember Abersol.
Yeah. So as far as the view quarter, uh, issue, we have three great examples right now to look for right here on our screen. We can look at, uh, councilmember Markley's, councilmember Wilk's and councilmember Rodenberg's backgrounds. And obviously boats are part of the image that Gig Harbor is used, uh, when people take pictures of us to, uh, represent ourselves. But I'm just looking at councilmember Markley's and, you know, you can still see the water there. I think it's important to, to protect whatever view we have, uh, like councilmember French did say. But, you know, let's face the obvious truth is that, uh, people come to Gig Harbor, they expect to see boats on, on the water. And then of course the mountain, uh, and then all the beautiful houses that are around here. So I, I do think it's important because in those pictures, you can see that there is a lot of boats and it's starting to get blurred. And, uh, maybe it's not completely taken up now, but twenty, thirty years from now, those could be the only view that we see other than trees and the mountain.
Councilmember.
Yes, I, I'm very much interested in a hybrid design. At first I was, um, when the, in the summer, when the fishing, when the commercial boats are gone, I, I was at one point really interested in renting out those slots again. But I don't know that I am anymore, because if the view is so important to people, um, I mean, I also happen to think that fishing boats are a view, a beautiful view, and this is a commercial spot. But if people are concerned about the view, then maybe we need to leave that area in the summertime when the commercial fishing boats are gone. Leave that just for our commercial fishing boats and not allow visitors to use that spot and then it will be flat and then it will be more open. But, um, but I'm really, I'm interested very much in a hybrid. And, uh, I'm very much interested in what our commercial fishermen have to say, since this is for them. That is the purpose of this and so of this area. So I, I'm, I, I'm very much in favor of hybrid.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Heinz.
Uh, yeah, I, there seems to be different views on, on the view, so to speak. And I think it's extremely important, the view. I would also reference back, if you remember the famous nineteen, no, no, it was two thousand and sixteen, the boater infrastructure grant, B I G, that blew up mainly because they wanted to cut down on the views across and, and right out in front of Anshich Park. And everybody went crazy on that thing. And we actually turned down money. Okay, essentially free money, not. And everybody went crazy on that thing and we actually turned down money, okay, essentially free money, not. And uh, so I think we better tread very carefully on this view discussion. Uh, and, and if it becomes tight, I think we better go back to the public and get a real downtown reading on. You know, if you had the choice of views of boats or you had a views of the harbor, which one would you want? Because like I say, the precedent is there with the B I G grant issue. And, and that was a, uh, those of us who remember, that was almost a done deal that exploded at the last minute because of the cut down of the views.
Mayor Q. Oh, you're muted, mayor.
I'm sorry, I, I would have to agree with uh, councilmember Hines. For those of us that remember, that was called the big grant. That was a five million dollar grant. Uh, most of the money was there and we were gonna build all these fingers right in front of Scancy Net Shed. And it blew up in our face and it was a bad scenario. And um, you know, the view corridor, you know, a, a lot of the views that people show on our screen, at least Markley's, is probably from the Vin Vinhome View Climb. So sure, if you go, if you go, you know, many streets back and look down, you can see more of a view, but I wanna make sure that, you know, we listen to our citizens and my point is, we don't wanna, we don't wanna tell them what they think. And that stakeholder meetings that D C G did for a year, that was with a lot of people that were concerned about the view corridor. And um, that's why we actually went, went with the Jerkovich in a dock in a way. So I, I wanna make sure that we don't tell people that were involved in the, in the consulting what, what they meant when they, when they purposely wanted to see the water from afar. Uh, I also as, as opposed, as talking about rafting, you know, I mean, if we wanna go back and start all over again and pay consultants everything and do it all over again, but we, we I don't think it's wise to go against what the consultants and against what all the stakeholders said and the fishermen. That was a very thorough thing. The other thing I'm, and that's what we would have to do. The other thing I might mention, you do not need to mitigate rafting. By state law, if you raft boats next to each other, you don't have to mitigate it. If you do fingers, you have to mitigate every finger dock. So uh, that's gonna be more involved. Thank you.
Councilmember Markley?
Uh, yes, thank you. I was gonna um, say something similar to councilmember Hines. What, what is gonna be the public process so that we can have an, an adequate chance to hear what they want and what they, what they want to see?
Well, the, the next steps are going to, we've been wondering if we can have the public process before the, the commercial fishing operators leave in end of May, first part of June. Uh, and if so, can we have that in person? Ideally, it's been, we've been wanting to have it in person, but we, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do that, so. We have to make a decision soon. Do we go ahead and have the public open house, bring everybody together, have, and uh, and get input from everybody on the alternatives and possibly a hybrid? Um, or do we wait until the fishing operators return August, September uh, and have that conversation then?
Would there be a way to do an outdoor open house? Just a suggestion. I mean, if you can eat outdoors in a tent, why couldn't you come masked and look at pictures and stay distanced? Have each thing distanced and somehow try to do it outdoors? Is that, I, I'm just throwing it out there, just.
Yeah, I, that, that's a good idea. We'll be, we could definitely have it. We could even open the doors of Antsich Waterfront Park, but we still have to get into phase three, I believe, before we have that large gathering.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, uh, councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, well, now I have a super hybrid idea. Um, the, the original hybrid was to have fingers on both sides of the float. Uh, but if we had linear mooring on the Terabokia side and fingers on the uh, Jerkovich side, that be, might be a way we can increase the view cor- open water view corridor and have a combination of mooring that would actually give us more vessels. So uh, thank you for saying that we would uh, throw some dimensions together and just see if that's, I don't think we should ignore that idea. Uh, if we don't investigate exactly what the benefits might be.
Uh, councilmember Denson.
I think councilmember Rodenberg's idea is intriguing. I would definitely like to see that. I just had a quick question for you, Mr. Langham. So option A is eleven boats. There's not really rafting options. Option E is eight boats, potentially twelve with rafting. How many boats did you say could fit within the Helix model?
Well, let me go back and look and it's, we have to be cautious because the Helix model, well. I, I, I determined, I determined linear feet of mortgage instead of boats. Um, because some of these, I mean, let, let's say right here, these three finger piers would probably have to come out because there's not enough distance. There's not that ninety feet that, that I was provided. And so these are no longer finger piers, but this is, this would be linear mortgage in this one section. Um, and then this whole, this whole area has to be shifted out away from the outer harbor and that will probably have an effect on this finger float here. So uh, the, the rough number I got was, it was a little over a thousand linear feet of mortgage, but that's where that hybrid or the super hybrid that councilrodenberg's talking about, where we could look at that and see what, what could work.
Yeah, what you just described was sounding an awful lot like councilmember Rodenberg's idea. Probably, I'm sorry, I'm probably more interested in the number of boats and the linear footage because of the information we got from the fishermen. There's twenty-nine potentially boats out there looking, variety of sizes. You know, I would like to have, I would like to accommodate, you know, the more of our fleet, obviously with being as sensitive to the view corridor as possible.
Yeah, that I, we have just, and I know we talked about this, but we have to be cautious because once you put a finger float in, that's the, that's the maximum length the boat can a vessel can tie up to that. So if you have, in this case, and these are precise, I apologize, this is, you can tell an engineer to this fifty-six point four feet. So um, so what if you have a sixty-foot vessel? Well, it's not gonna be able to tie up there necessarily because it's either the nose is gonna stick way over the dock, which is not allowed, or the, the tail's gonna stick way out and that's not necessarily safe. So we have to be cautious and, you know, those kinds of things can be tweaked, maneuvered. But um, if you have many sixty-foot vessels, then we have to look and see what that effect would have, so. Um, that's one limitation of the finger piers, but uh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, councilmember Franch.
Yeah, that, that's why uh, you know, i- it's, I, people need to be real careful of falling into a trap of trying to determine number of votes versus linear feet, because linear feet is the more crucial thing. The major, vast majority of the boats, the Saners are fifty-eight feet, so uh, if you could say, you know, i- is, somebody could tell you, well, we can get eighteen boats under one scenario, but uh, ten of those boats are only forty feet, that really doesn't do us any good. So uh, there needs to be some, people need to really keep in mind that there is a not a direct correlation between the benefit and the number of boats, so to speak. It's, well, the near feed is, is a more critical number and when you're trying to figure out um, what is uh, the biggest need for our local commercial fishing fleet, which is the one that I'm more concerned with. I'm not too concerned with the thirty to thirty-eight foot gillmetter that's uh, tied up in Tacoma or Seattle.
Uh, Mayor Q.
Yeah, I also wanna keep in mind, I, I wanna um, work on, on boats that really come of the, of, you know, I just heard the word twenty-nine boats. A lot of those, some of those twenty-nine boats, they don't come down to Gig Harbor. They stay up in Alaska. Uh, every, all year round. They're not gonna, my knowledge, they're not gonna make thousands of dollars worth of a trip to come down here of safety just to turn around and go back up there. So I believe, I wanna, I wanna make sure we fill a dock, but some of those twenty-nine, they don't come down to Gig Harbor. They stay in Alaska. Just to, to be clear.
Okay, well, that was uh, more discussion than anticipated, but I appreciate it. There was a lot of good information and the good options that came from that. Um, the, the, as I said, this, this will be presented when we have our open house along with uh, some hybrids that were requested by council. Uh, and we can go from there and talk about, uh, but we have to be cautious when we do have that open house that the options, any hybrid option uh, was not considered as part of the study, so uh, that, that's all I had for this topic.
Okay, so our last item is uh, twenty twenty-one federal funding of capital projects. Um, it's, it's really good. So did, so uh, Jeff, you sent out the memo, correct?
Correct, I did, yes.
Okay.
I hope everybody received it. It was late, it was late.
Sure.
Because of our meeting.
So I guess just to make it easy, can you put that up on the screen for us?
Uh, sure.
Everyone, just give me a th- a raise of hands that you, you know what I'm talking about, the memo that you got of our five, great.
Okay, let me bring that up. Just happened to have it here.
So we're fortunate. There are cap, there are uh, earmarks coming back and as a councilperson or elected official, uh, we're glad. So um, yeah, I know, I, I figured that. But um, there are, you know, everyone got this letter. We, you know, this is kinda tricky because these are shovel-ready projects. Well, basically that means we have to already know that we can pay for it or we've already designed it. Uh, so it would could happen this year or next year. So we've, we've identified five projects that are pretty much shovel-ready. Now, one, um, it has to be on our capital improvement plan, has to be shovel-ready. Uh, include matching dollars from the city, we've got that. Be large enough to budget, to justify additional federal requirements imposed due to the city receiving federal funds and have, provide significant benefit to the community and receive community support. Uh, we've got five good ones. The first one is Thirty-Eighth Avenue Improvements Phase Two. I had a good talk with this, with councilmember Hines. We've got, this phase two is where the trailer park is, where T C C is. We've got a lot of homes there. One side of that, the, the west side of that street, Thirty-Eighth, is county. The east side is city. So we're benefiting not only the county, but the city, uh, T C C. There's churches up there. Um, uh, the Fish Food Bank even has property up there, so, and there's a trailer park. So that's almost seven million dollars, six point nine million dollars for sidewalks. Basically, this goes from Patterson's Fruit Stand, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but all the way to uh, Hunt Street.
Correct, yeah, fifty-six to Hunt, and, and we're proposing to put it on the east side of the road at this point.
Right, so that's great. And you've got the sports complex, one B, which is great, and we're including additional parking that uh, could benefit uh, the area where uh, councilmember Markley lives. Where you, where we had talked about trying to get some parking over there, so you don't have to go out of that whole neighborhood to go to the sports complex and go all the way around, that you could go to the end of that little cul-de-sac there and just have a little bit of parking. Um, it also could help us with our parking at the Y. And so that's, that's great. We have the Burnham Drive improvements. Uh, you know, we talked about not putting the sidewalks as high up because it was a seven million dollar price tag. Now this could let us get uh, sidewalks higher up that we talked about, the extra three million dollars that we, that we really didn't uh, wanna do. And then the metering at our roundabout below target. Uh, sure, the Burnham Roundabout has really helped, the Harbor Hill, but there's still traffic there and we were gonna meter so that um, we could get the, the flow. You know, if we meter, we might be able to get Pierce Transit to get, to go to the hospital because we could act- actually control the flow. And then we'll watch it. You know, Wagner Way is across the street from that Shell Station on Pioneer. And you've got, Rush is doing a lot of development there. And once Rush fills those a hundred and eighty-one homes on Hunt in Scancy, people may not, it may get traffic, a lot more traffic there, and so they may take Seventy Second Street and cut through there. You know, we had a, an improvement project of a light there planned. Uh, it was up, up of a million dollars, so we delayed it. So these are five great projects and I'm excited about it and maybe, maybe I uh, took a little bit of Jeff's thunder, but why don't you proceed, Jeff?
Uh, no, that was great. Uh, you, you pretty much said what I was gonna say. Uh, I, I just wanna make sure though that those uh, the, the, the successful project consisting of, of those features, there's six of them listed in letters format there. Um, one thing that from staff's point of view, we wanna make sure we're very clear about and we added in there is, is D. Be large enough to have a project budget to justify additional federal requirements. Um, we've talked about this with council before and I just wanna reiterate, count, the, the, these federal projects cost us money. Uh, just an example of what they cost us. If, if we were to do just a local project or receive local funds or state funds, if we were to do improvements across somebody's frontage and were to request uh, an easement or uh, some right-of-way, in the local process, we can negotiate that. We don't have to pay somebody cash. We can say in-kind value, we're putting a sidewalk in front of your house and that value that we're adding to your property uh, offsets the value that we would otherwise pay you to get three feet of right-of-way. In the federal process, we can't do that. We have to follow federal purchasing, property purchasing requirements, then that process takes at least a year. Um, and there's a whole nother, that's just one example. There's a whole host of other federal requirements we have to follow that we could otherwise do with uh, with, with less formality and, and we could do with negotiations instead of having to pay people. Um, a- and so I'm not saying it's not, that we're not being fair by doing it in the local process. I just think that there's a different approach we can take. Um, that, that the, some of these grants will not be including Wash Dot uh, interaction. We would, uh, in, in particular the build grant, we would not be uh, involving Wash Dot. Wash Dot is, is the middleman for us and some people say the middleman's not a good person to have involved because they cost money and it does cost a little bit of money, but Wash Dot speaks the federal language. They can help us find ways to get through the process that we don't otherwise know. Um, and the federal agencies like to deal with the large agencies, the Tacomas, the Seattle's, the King Counties, the, the state agencies, small agencies like this. That, we're not easy to, to, for them to deal with, so. Um, w- we want to focus on projects that we can have Wash Dot's local programs assistance in and projects that will make it worthwhile for us to actually have staff training, have staff involvement, consultant involvement that costs us a significant amount of money, so. Uh, the, the number that was thrown to us from some state agencies of, is essentially, if, if this project isn't a couple million dollars, don't, you should be very concerned and, and, or, sorry, you should be very uh, considerate of, of your own time and ask yourself if it's worth going after. So that's one of the reasons why four and five are also down at the bottom of the list. Uh, councilmember Franch.
So uh, on item number three there, are you talking about ripping out the existing sidewalks?
It was, it, it was all a phase one and not just the phase one A that we've decided on and we're progressing forward with, with design now. It would be all of phase one. Phase one technically is from, I think it's from North Harbor View or Harbor View Drive, North Harbor View Intersection all the way up to the new improvements at the Harbor Hill um, Burnham Drive Roundabout.
Right, so that, that includes ripping out the existing sidewalks there because they don't meet some uh, the A D A compliance.
Correct, and yes, that, that's what that project would entail.
Okay, well, um, I, I think you all know where I, where I stand on uh, these federal the, the, the federal government can't afford this. This is, this is and I, and I'm really surprised that the mayor talking about loving the, that earmarks are coming back. It's one of the most criminally uh, insane things that goes on with the government and man, uh, to even put a project that we already have sidewalks and, and we're gonna want three million dollars to bring these to some new standard, that, that is just um, so irresponsible, I, I can't even e- explain it. I, I am happy to see that uh, number one is the, the most critical section of Thirty-Eighth that needs the sidewalks, which is fifty-six to Hunt Street, but uh, in, in maybe the sports complex to some degree. But uh, the, the, the rest of this is just uh, i- i- it's really, really poor president. Uh, i- it's irresponsibility. Uh, at, at its height, so um, boy.
Senator Larson, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. The council, I understand your concern and I, I agree. I don't make the federal rules, but they're gonna give it to someone. And that's it. They're gonna give it to someone, and I'd, I'd rather be on the list than have someone else get it.
City Administrator Larson.
Jeff, in addition to what you spoke to earlier, I think we should step back and just in case council, uh, you give, give them a bit more background on how we arrived at this and what was the process and explain, there's, there's two different approaches. Uh, because there, there, there's some earmark money, there's also some of that, uh, I think it's called the third, third, uh, funding, the one point nine trillion dollars that might be coming through, through the Senate that we've been referring to. And I think it'd be helpful if council understood that, that there are some, obviously some program limitations, but, uh, these monies are gonna be available. I just think if the case council didn't, didn't appreciate that when they were reading through this, I think we, we jumped into it pretty quickly there. But, uh, I, I want them to understand that this is stuff that, obviously Dale Lern and Gordon Thomas Heigl will be helping us, helping us with this up as part of their federal lobbying contract. We'll, we'll, we'll set them up with the information, and they're gonna take it from there and help us with the application and so on and so forth.
Sure, yeah, and sorry for not being more detailed, but yeah, so that, I had attached Senator Murray's infrastructure priority solicitation form to the memo. And, uh, that, that is the most immediate, uh, funding deadline. Um, Dale Lern has said that that is something where we need to get information to him, uh, next week even. Uh, and so coming out of this meeting is, is going to be, uh, some information I'm gonna take with me to provide Dale with information on projects and priorities of projects. Uh, but then we have a whole host of other projects, uh, surface transportation projects, uh, the build grants and, and even more uh, earmarks that, that we're, we've been talking about. Um, and so, uh, we, we do need to look at those limitations individually. Um, and, but right now, we're trying to focus on Senator Murray's form. Um, and I, Dale Lern would probably be the best person to describe what all of those limitations are. I don't know those very well myself.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, kind of ju- jumped right into it, Jeff.
But in the meantime, we, we would be looking for a direction from council on these five items that we've listed today, the projects, so we can get moving on those if necessary.
Councilmember Rodenber.
Yeah, I would, I have a, a couple of things. Uh, one is those, all those five projects seem like they're very, uh, they're things that we want, but I would hope that, uh, one of the factors when we decide to prioritize these things is not necessarily what we want, what would be nice, but which ones are most likely to get the federal funding. I know the feds would look at things a particular way. Uh, for instance, the Highway Sixteen Improvement. Uh, you know, Highway Sixteen is, uh, a main thoroughfare to all the military bases up to sixteen. That might have a little more pull than a, a sports center. So I hope we use that as a factor in determining the priorities. And one of the other things is, uh, a couple places in your memo here, you talked about a limited group of city representatives, and below you say, uh, capital projects were selected by the city representatives. Who were those city representatives? Are they elected? Are they staff? Are they citizens?
Uh, it was, uh, staff and elected, it was, uh, included Mayor Kuhn, uh, IGA Chair, Councilmember Denson. Um, and, uh, uh, Councilmember Himes and myself, Trent Ward, and, uh, City Administrator Larson along with Dale Lern. But you're absolutely right, we will be asking for Dale to help in, Dale Lern with his experience, uh, working for Senator Murray, to provide us the guidance of which projects would fit into which funding category the best.
Yeah, and when we talk about extra money for, uh, doing federally funded projects or the extra cost, uh, I think that Harbor Hill Drive Extension was at one time, uh, going to use federal funds. But to meet the criteria to get federal funds was outrageous. You might have on the top of your head the difference between what that twelve million dollar plus project cost and what it would have cost had we used federal funds. Uh, it was significant.
Yeah, our, our rough estimate when we go into these types of projects and discussions is anticipate a twenty percent increase.
There you go, yeah. So that would be three million dollars. Okay.
Jeff, you might also touch on, Dale had told us we should come up with three to five projects. Um, we don't think we have any other projects that are shovel, that are designed well enough. Um, because when they, they said shovel-ready, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but there weren't, weren't other projects to really pick from.
Correct, yeah, we, we looked at, um, we looked at the projects that were in our, uh, tier two, tier three, tier four uh, list, and you might say, well, Wagner Willatchit isn't in that list, but, or neither necessarily is the roundabout metering. But, um, the Wagner Willatchit project, as the mayor alluded to earlier, we already bid that project. That project is designed on the shelf, we just have to dust it off, bring it up to current standards, and then put it out to bid. So that one is essentially shovel-ready. Uh, the metering is pretty, pretty close to being there, uh, but that was a key criteria, uh, Mayor, you're absolutely right. And, uh, we didn't see in, in our quick review of, with Dale's input, uh, projects that were shovel-ready that we could, that would fit well into the, uh, grant categories.
Councilmember Wook.
So the amount here of each project, is this the amount of the total project? Is this the amount from, that could be coming from the federal funding?
No, this is the amount of the project itself.
And do we have any, do we have any idea how much funding is available?
Uh, depends on which source. Um, and it, it, it greatly, greatly varies. Um, though, I think Dale's words were, don't expect to put multiple projects into, and be successful with multiple projects out of one source. So find one that you think is a good fit, go after that one, and then, um, take another project that's also on your list, and it might be a good fit in another funding source and go after that one.
So are, are you, and so listening to this conversation with Harbor Hill Drive Extension and the twenty percent. For example, item number one, Thirty-Eighth Street Improvements, Avenue Improvements, for six million nine hundred and fifty thousand. Then you go twenty percent above that, and that's how much the project would cost then?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, and then let's say, let's say that the, for the new project total is, um, eight, eight point two million or something. Um, then if we're going to get five million dollars, six million dollars from the agency, then it's, it's, then it's worth it because it pays for itself a couple times over.
So basically, we have to figure out the, the funding with the federal up as to how much it would be without the federal and see if it makes sense for us.
Yes, and also something to keep in mind that I don't have listed here because I don't have it officially from anyone. But TIB has said that they typically, if a project is federalized, that means it's getting federal dollars and it has to be all federal requirements. Once a project is federalized, TIB will likely not provide funding for that project. They don't want their money to touch federalized projects because it is so much more expensive to deal with. They want their money to go directly to construction.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Himes. Okay, I'll come back to you.
There we go, okay.
You're muted, sorry.
Yeah, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue thing was jumped out to me almost immediately for a bunch of reasons. One, it was the biggest number that we got in the tip, uh, and they said the bigger the better. Uh, the issues there are well-known. Uh, I mean, there's everything from, I hate to use the, let's just say, safety is enhanced with the, uh, the improvements that would go in there. There are no, there is no shoulder there. There's a, there's a drainage ditch that you fall into if you try to, to go on that thing. And you get the cycling lanes, you get the, the sidewalks, you get the storm sewers, you get the whole nine yards. It's, uh, and by the way, you improve traffic with the, the turn lane, the, the, the three-lane, uh, setups at the turns. Um, the other thing it, I think is key there is that project is probably gonna be one of the most difficult to fund internally you, you could ever see. H, this is out of the HBZ zone, and I don't know whether you're familiar with HBZ, but HBZ is the magic dust that makes everything work in the capital world here. Uh, at least it, it funds a heck of a lot of it. This is not eligible, it's, it's out of it, okay? So this one, we're gonna have to find other sources to pull it off, and it's a big number. So those are my comments relative to that, and I thought that was one of the reasons why that ought to be number one. I did, just leaked off the paper.
Thank you. Councilmember Franny.
So Jeff, are you telling me that these, this, these numbers that you have here, it, for example, on Thirty-Eighth, six point nine five, is that the estimated project cost?
It's the estimated pro- mo- most of these estimated project costs come directly from the, the current tip, the city's current tip. So that six point nine five came from the tip as it sits today.
Okay, a- and tha- that does not take, and, and I'm trying to get some clarification on what Councilmember Wook was asking about earlier. So it's in the tip at six point nine five million, then i- it, what you just said about the twenty percent, that would be in addition to the six point nine five?
Correct. So the new number, I'm calculating it right now, eight point three four. So if, that's just using twenty percent, that's a rough estimate, but i- i- if we were to use that, that criteria of, of federalizing a project costs us about twenty percent more, that new number would be eight point three four million.
Wow, this, this is just troubling on, on so many different levels that, uh, I, I can't even get my hands around it. Um, so I, I, you know, this kind of came out of the blue last week, and I, uh, had some of the same questions Councilmember Rodenberg asked until I talked to Councilmember Himes today about, you know, who was involved in picking these projects. So, um, I guess then you did do a pretty exhaustive review of the capital improvement projects?
I would say so, yes. I mean, because we have to focus on item B, be shovel-ready or shovel-worthy. I mean, there's a lot of projects that are on our, uh, six-year, twenty-year project list, but I wouldn't consider very many of them shovel-ready or shovel-worthy. So when you pair those out, then the number gets pretty small, and then we have to just think about all the rest of the criteria. I- is, is the project large enough? I mean, a five hundred thousand dollar project really isn't worth it.
What, what is the timeframe when you need to submit this?
Uh, for the Murray form, um, I need to provide Dale learn something next week.
Okay, well, I, I, I know for myself, I don't know about any of the rest of council, but I, I need to do a little bit, uh, deeper look into seeing if there's, eh, on that capital, uh, improvement plan to see, um, i- if there's anything else that, that, that you missed. Um, because I'm telling you, that number three, I, I've got nothing but a lot of heartburn about that. And, uh, tearing out perfectly good infrastructure, just because we've got quote-unquote free money that, uh, we're gonna replace it with is, is a bunch of crap.
Well, if you're gonna look at the, uh, capital project list, all I ask is that you focus on the six-year tip list and keep that shovel-ready, uh, task in mind. If anything has a lot of environmental permitting associated with it. I, I mean, essentially, it needs to be constructed, able to be constructed in twenty twenty-two.
Right, and, and again, we didn't find others, um, so we took what we could. And, you know, Councilmember Wook was right where, you know, sure, we, it has to balance out. So i- i- if the twenty percent included still costs us less than going out on our own in the state, then it, it, then it warrants it, like she pointed out. So, uh, Councilmember Rodenber.
I apologize, I didn't know my hand was up.
Okay, Councilmember Denson.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on a couple of things. Um, Jeff, I appreciate all the work you did identifying projects. This did come out of the blue, and it is really, really quick, but this is one of the opportunities we have to leverage other funding to get some projects done that are really, really important. And I just wanted to make the point that we did our best as, um, just a group that got together real quick last week and were presented with the possible projects. We did our best to come up with an order, not necessarily in priority, but a strategic order of what we thought our, our best guess had, had the best shot of getting funded. Um, same point that Councilmember Rodenber made, Mr. Lern explained to us that there's different pots of money, and we don't want to lead with three projects that would potentially come out of the same pot, because that's not gonna work, but if we could come up with one transportation, and then we put the sports complex next, because that could be a completely different pot of money and then back, that was our thinking. That being said, once Dale receives the information from Jeff, um, who's gonna provide some information for these forms that, that Dale, but pretty much Jeff is going to be filling out, I mean, let's, let's be honest. Once Dale receives that information, he may re-prioritize based on what he knows of what's actually going on in Washington and who's in charge and how much money we're in these other pots. And that's fine, if we get money for any of these projects, it's money we didn't have before. So I just want to thank, thank Jeff, and hopefully we'll get one or more of these projects funded so we can move forward.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Denson. This, this was fast, we had to react, that's why we're bringing it to you now. We, um, we didn't even have time to send this to, well, we, I think we did, but we, we knew you all would okay it, but we had to react quick. But that's why we fine-tuned the contract with the lobbyists, with our federal lobbyists. We, we decided not to forego our federal lobbyists, and we asked our federal lobbyists, okay, we don't have time to work on this stuff. You, you bring us projects, but we can't work on it. And they go, okay, well, we'll work on it for you. So, uh, we're, we're utilizing them. And I know what you mean, Councilmember Franny, but, you know, Burnham is just one of them, and hopefully we'll get the other ones, and we don't have to do what you don't want. So, um, more than likely, it's gonna be other projects, even if it happens. Uh, 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 City Administrator, uh, Bob Larson.
You're muted, Bob.
It says right there on my screen I was muted, thank you, sorry. I appreciate all the comments from council and, and Jeff's background. I just wanted to note one more thing or two more. And that is that this is a infrastructure, infrastructure priority solicitation form only from Senator Murray. And so she'll be, she'll be gathering up this information, and then she'll be putting it into some type of order as well. So we want to make sure that we've got projects that are ready to go, and we want to make sure that we've got our priority straight. And with all due respect, all that was said today, I really think that we need some type of consensus from council about a go or no-go today. Because it's gonna take some time for us to get those forms ready and get them off to Dale, and, and the sooner the better. The deadline actually was for them, I believe, is March fifteen, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, so, yes, yes, it is. Dale wanted something next week, though, as a draft, but yes.
He wants something, yeah, he needs a draft sooner than that so he can work with it, but yeah, that's the ultimate deadline. So I would really appreciate if, if, uh, after all was said and done here, that if council could give us a, some type of a consensus here, what we should be doing. Because we really need to move on this if we're gonna do it. Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, let's, let's, uh, because we can do motions, let's have a motion by someone if, if they'd like to bring this forward that we seek, that we go after these with our lobbyists.
Thank you. So I'm happy to make a motion. My motion would be that, uh, we present items, uh, one, two, three, four, and five to our lobbyists or to, um, yeah, to our lobbyists to seek federal funding on this. Is that an appropriate motion for this?
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Himes?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I'd like to second that, but I'd also like to amend it. Um, and that is, I, I assume that we can request an amount, uh, of that six point nine million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, we can, we can't requ- we have to have matching funds, yes. And so we have, we can't request the entire.
Okay, we can't, we can't request the whole thing, but we have to contribute something to it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I think, and I guess my request would be that we request an amount such that we can't lose with the twenty percent increase, okay? Or that we actually gain something with the twenty percent increase. It would seem to me we could strategically set the amount that we're requesting to make sure we either get it uh, and, and win, but we can't get it and lose, put it that way. So, um, I'm not sure how to fit that into the motion, but I, I guess I'm asking that as a integral part of moving forward with this.
So I'm happy to remotion, or actually, I'm happy to take my motion back if you would like to make the original, Bob, and, uh, and include that in your motion somehow.
Just making an amendment, just amend it to, uh, request an amount such that, uh, we come out ahead with the required additional work for federal, federal funding.
Okay, taking into account the twenty percent too?
Exactly, taking.
And, and that's something I, I think I need to, um, have a conversation with Dale Lern about to make sure that I, because again, th- th- this, the current tip shows six point nine five million. So if we're gonna, if we have a tip that shows the project six point nine five, and all of a sudden- So if we're going to, if we have a tip that shows the project 6.95 and all of a sudden we're asking for 8.34, I don't know if the Senator Murray's office is going to look at that and say, something's not jiving. Why are you doing this? And, and a response is not allowed to say, well, because projects are going to cost us 20% more.
Yeah, I, I, I was not thinking of something in excess of 6.9 million. I was thinking in terms of something where if you got, for example, in your example, you said if we got four or five million, you come out ahead. Okay?
I see.
Even with the 20%, you come out ahead. That's what I'm looking for.
And, and is it possible if, if this doesn't happen, if, if the money available to us does not put us ahead, is it possible for us to refuse that or does this put us a black mark, a black mark forever?
I don't, I don't know if it has a black mark forever. It's going to be a mark. I don't know if it's a black mark forever. We can refuse it.
So Josh, Josh Decker, are you listening? Do you, are you listening?
I'm listening.
Okay. Did you get that motion down, you know, somewhat that Bob had mentioned?
I did not. No, I'm going to need that spelled out in something that's actionable.
Okay. I'll call the other two, but Councilmember Heims, do you want to try one more time?
Yeah. Basically, I would like to amend Councilmember Wook's motion to indicate that we will request an amount sufficient so that sufficient, so that with the 20% incremental cost associated with the federal projects, that we still come out ahead by pursuing these projects.
Okay. So a couple of things, so can we get a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay. We got some discussion here and then Josh, you can always listen to the recording, but you've got Councilmember Wooks and then you've got Councilmember Heims. You can always reach out to them as well. Councilmember Franch.
So are, are these matching or non-matching projects, Jeff?
They require match.
How much?
It depends on which, which grant you're looking at.
So does that mean we can, grants that are more than 50% so that we wouldn't have to match 50?
I haven't heard of a grant that requires 50% with this, but I, I didn't look through all of them. What I'm seeing is 10, 10 to 20%, 10 to 20% match.
Okay. And then the 20% on top of that, and do we have anything budgeted for 38th Street, the budget, phase two?
In 2021? No, I don't think so. I think we only have phase one A.
And how much do we have for the sports complex?
Total budget, I thought it was around $3 million.
That we have budgeted?
Right.
Yeah.
But the thing is, we're using HBZ. So the thing is, if we, if we got that, we don't have to use HBZ and we could use HBZ on another road project that we couldn't get, that's not shovel ready right now. But frees up, it frees up our HBZ if it happened. Did you, did that answer your question enough, Councilmember Franch?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenber.
Yeah, this is a little bit to address Councilmember Wook's comment and question. In any kind of grant, I'd hate to see anybody go to all this work, we get the grant and then at the last minute, we figure out that no, that is not going to be feasible for us. But just to make her feel a little bit more comfortable, we can always do that. If we went through the process and it turns out that we're going to lose, like Councilman Heims said he wanted to stay away from, then we just say, no, we don't want it. So we're not going to tie it into anything just because we applied for it.
Right. Thank you. Okay, let's see. I don't think I see, okay, I don't see anyone else. Okay. Let's, let's, what do we do? We, we vote on the amended motion first. We have a second. All those in favor of Councilmember Heims' amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I meant to say aye, I didn't unmute in time, but aye.
I'm not sure of what council, was council, are you talking about the not going backwards?
Yeah, making sure that we, we come up, come out ahead and not behind where it would cost us 20% less. So yes, we got the project, but we actually are paying more money than if we.
Yeah.
Okay. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Motion passes seven, zero, the amended motion passes. Now back to the original motion of Councilmember Wook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I, can I have a, I'm sorry, can I have a refresh of what Councilmember Wook's motion was?
Sure.
Sure. My motion was to apply for one through five items.
Okay, isn't Councilmember Heims is kind of doing the same thing, but apply for five, but make sure we don't go, get, get behind?
He didn't have the apply for five. His was just to make sure we didn't get behind.
Okay.
And he simply amended, amended Wook, Councilmember Wook's motion.
Yeah.
To, to make it more refined.
Oh, Councilmember Wook was to, to approve these five projects to go for funding. Councilmember Heims was to make sure that we don't spend more money than trying a different approach in the state or by ourselves.
Okay.
So let's, we'll do it again. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I, I heard only two. Let's make sure you say one way or the other, but all those in.
Two, four votes please.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Markley.
Nay on this one.
Councilmember Franch.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Markley. Absolutely not.
Councilmember Wook.
Aye.
Councilmember Abersole.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodenber.
Aye.
And Councilmember Heims.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to two. Okay, so we will, we will work with, you know, Jeff's going to have to make sure Dale's, you know, yeah, I understand that. You can't say, okay, well, it's going to cost 20% more. Throw the extra 20% in there and then put it in there. Yeah. We have to make sure this isn't a done deal. Our lobbyists have to accept the, the avenue that we want to go. So we'll stay tuned on that. So, but good, good, good discussion. Josh, do you have any questions on that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments for the order?
Is it, is it possible to make council comments in a work study session?
I don't see why not. You're not, as long as you don't try to put up something new on the agenda. I would stay away from saying I want to propose something, but otherwise, sure.
All right, great. Thank you. You know, you know, I, it, it's really funny, you know, I, I've been around a long, I know, I know the way government is and the way government works. And one of the reasons I came back is because I think there's a real serious problem with the way government works and the way things get done in government. And we had a, a pretty good bunch. At least from my perspective, I think we had, we had a pretty good bunch going towards that. And for the most part, I, I think we still do, but I think a lot of times that people that are involved in politics, they, they become under the ether of the system and they fall away from really what is really, really right for all people that live in the United States. And I, I know, I don't, I'm here to represent the citizens of Gage Harbor, so I can understand the thought that, you know, hey, they're, they're using an explicit word that I would like to use with the money. So since they're going to be spending that money anyway, we might as well get ours. Well, you know, I understand that notion, but for me, deep down in my heart, if I know something's wrong, which I believe the way these earmarks go are wrong, I, I simply can't support it. And I just wanted to go on the record and have you said that.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see, raise your hand. I don't have my little thing back up if you had any comments. Otherwise, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. I hope you have a great Friday.